The confidence is terrific. Little Butler.
Calling the August 4th, 2022 zoning commission meeting to order.
Your microphone on?
The red or the green lights on.
Mr. Mercer, will you please call roll call?
Okay. So, roll call. Good any? Yes, no? Okay, Friedrich?
Here.
Havelis?
Here.
Sorry. Honig? Irwin?
Here.
Kingsworthy?
Here.
Leish?
Here.
Nicholas?
Here.
And Ortman?
Here.
You do have a quorum, ma'am. Two absent, the remainder are present.
First on our agenda is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Agenda approved.
All in favor.
All in. A roll call. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes? And opposed? Next on the agenda, approval of the minutes.
I'll motion to approve the minutes.
So those are the minutes of the July 7th?
7th, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes? Next on the agenda is zoning board of appeals report.
Madam Chair, I was not at the July meeting with the zoning board, but they did have one case at 2002 South Mission. His request for a variance from section 154, 405A of the zoning ordinance to permit an increase in the height of a fence from four feet to five and a half feet. The variance was approved at the meeting.
Next on the agenda is communications.
We have not received any communications up to this point for the, for the meeting.
Next is our, sort of our public hearings. First public hearing is SUP 2212.
And we'll turn that over to our staff from McKenna. First case is SUP 2212, 110, 1110, North Fancher, Low Key Properties. Request for special use permit for adult use Class C grower license.
Thank you very much. So here, this first case is a request for a special use permit to allow for an increase in marijuana cultivation for an existing marijuana cultivation facility. And the applicant is Low Key Properties. We note, when we look at the surrounding area, that we are in the SD1 industrial zoning district. The future land use is industrial. However, we do have some legally non-conforming uses around this site to the east is a single-family dwelling. And to the south, there's also a single-family dwelling. There's some photos of the facility in different directions. Okay. So in, in evaluating this, there are general special use standards. And then there are specific standards to marijuana establishments. We can, we'll start in the general special use standards under section 154.615B2. First, we know that adult-use marijuana grower is considered as special use within the SD1 district. So that is satisfied. The special use is operated in a manner compatible with the surrounding land uses within 300 feet. We're making that conclusion because also it was previously made when the initial marijuana use was approved in 2021 by the planning commission. The next question is whether the applicant demonstrates how the use is compatible with surrounding land uses. As I just mentioned, the immediate area is mixed. So we are unable right now to make a finding that the use is compatible with the surrounding land uses, considering the residential uses to the east and south. Next question is whether the special use would interfere with the general enjoyment of the surrounding area. It's pretty clear that it will not interfere with the general enjoyment, particularly because of the building's odor mitigation system, which was detailed by the applicant. And they provided sufficient information on that point. And then, yeah, it, because of that too, it will not have an adverse impact on the surrounding neighborhood within 300 feet. And it will not be hazardous to the adjacent property. And then, there's a question whether the special use should be adequately served by the existing capacity of essential public facilities and services. On that point, we defer to the Department of Public Works. In terms of the specific special use standards that apply to adult-use marijuana establishments, and now we're under section 154.410B4B, we note that the applicants are in compliance with the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act and its rules. Let's see. The screening, so the establishments shall be sufficiently set back from property lines or screened or buffered with a fence wall or a landscape screen to minimize light spillage, odor, and noise. That's under the, under the ordinance. The, here, the applicant has indicated that a six-foot fence, a screening fence, was proposed along their eastern property line. But right now, we're unable to confirm if adequate screening of the subject site has been completed or if additional screenings proposed. So that's one outstanding issue. However, they did provide an acceptable plan for storage and disposal of marijuana. And, and no, no overnight outside storage is taking place or outside of the building. So those, all of those requirements are met. In terms of signage, they're not proposing any additional signage. And they have provided us with a detailed, adequate odor mitigation plan. So overall, our recommendations are to approve this request subject to the applicant providing the following. First, a satisfactory response on how the business facility is compatible with surrounding land uses. And then also acceptable details regarding the site's completed or proposed screening.
Thank you, Mr. Littman. Any questions for our consultant?
Yes, I got a couple. Says to increase cultivation. Are they allowed to cultivate up to a certain amount at present?
So, yeah. Do you want to take that? I don't remember.
That's actually one of the questions we actually have for the applicant. And based on our recommendation is that your special use requirements indicate that they need to indicate how they feel they're compatible. And that's mainly got down to how they operate. And that mainly comes down to the fact that they currently have approval for medical marijuana growing. And these grow licenses have a certain quantity. And then the applicant indicates they would like to grow adult use. And however, those also are limited to a certain quantity. It wasn't clear in the application material or the supplemental material whether the medical marijuana will continue or if along with adult use or whether the medical marijuana will cease and just adult use and which specific license they have. So the only issue would be is if they would go for what's called a stacked license and have extra amount of Class C licenses, which, which have a high quantity of plants. And the only issue for us to consider would be is if the facility is physically capable of handling all those plants. So we just need further clarification from the applicant as to which license they want and the quantities associated.
Okay, so we've already granted special use for the medical.
Correct.
So now this special use will be for the recreational.
Correct.
And possibility they may keep both special uses if granted.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And that is something that is permitted both under your local ordinance and along with state statutes. However, it's just a matter of, once again, making sure exactly what type of use is in there and then ensuring they are compatible with the co-location requirements. Because it's not so much a local ordinance. We just require the applicant to comply with all the state requirements for co-location. So that would just be information that will be provided by the applicant.
Thank you.
Did you have a question for?
Is the applicant here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you'll probably want to hear from the applicant when you open the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Any further questions for the McKenna associates? If the applicant would like to come forward?
So, Madam Chair, do you want to officially open the public hearing on this case? And then ask for anyone in the audience, anyone present to come up and, and speak? And then you'll need, you'll have five minutes. And you'll need to indicate your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Sergio Valiente.
And can you speak into the?
Sergio Valiente, 1110 North Fancher, Mount Pleasant. I was actually gonna use only the adult use. And I was surrendering the, I already surrendered the medical. And I was only gonna use the adult use license. The actual operation won't be changing. Same plants will be in flower. I'll just have more space for clones and moms. And the main, the main factor here is to get my adult use for, to survive in this threatening market for the medical industry or sector, I would say. But I'm not sure what else to say. Sorry.
Quick question. You say you've already surrendered your medical use?
Yeah.
To the state or to the city?
To the city of Mount Pleasant.
Okay.
Because I was, I'm in the, I call for final inspection now, next week, to finish the construction. I already had the, Mr. Paterly for the medical. So I was able to turn it in before actually using the license. I haven't used it yet.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Could you indicate how the quantity of the license you'll be obtaining? Like how many plants to be able to grow? Is it A, B, or C?
Well, that's one of the issues with the adult use. It's, it goes from 100 plants to 500 to 2,000. So I don't have many options in between, which is why I'm going with the Class C. But it does allow me to have more babies, more clones, to have a more consecutive harvest. But besides that, it's gonna be the, the same plants and flower. And that part doesn't change at all.
But you will be applying for a Class C grow license from the state?
Yes, correct. Yes. Which I'm, I'm ready for phase two already. Next week, I will, I'll actually probably begin phase two tomorrow if you guys allow me to, to move forward. I'm pretty much.
Well, we can work with staff to determine that point. But, um, so that means that the Class C license allows the applicant, when they receive it, to grow up to 2,000 plants.
Correct.
So the applicant can choose to grow less. But like you mentioned, it's just between 500, somewhere between 500 and 2,000.
It's a very strange gap in between. The cost is heavy in the Class C. But in order to survive, I'm gonna have to, to go that route.
Do you have any idea about the total quantity you would be able to get based on the size of your facility?
Total quantity.
Like, like your ballpark? Like, is it, is it 800? Is it 1,200?
The number of plants. The number of plants at a time you can grow.
It'll be roughly about 1,000 in flower, maybe less, probably less. Majority will be the clones and the moms, which is what's really saving me with the, allowing to, to obtain the adult use Class C will be, will save me, honestly.
Any, any further questions for the applicant?
Yes, I have some questions, but perhaps should have been directed as much to the McKenna group as to your, just to yourself. In regards to the building and lot plan standard section of the report. Point one, the applicant has not provided documentation. They are in compliance with MRTMA and MRTMA rules. I was just curious if you know what that is? And if that's something that you are planning to submit?
Yes, that's what we're working on right now. We speak actually, yeah.
Great.
To phase two, which is what we're doing now.
Very good. And that's the same for question, or point three in terms of the screening. A site plan review has not been submitted. And yet I do see plans. So they, these just haven't been submitted as officially.
Yeah. I purchased the building with the site plans already approved in the city of Mount Pleasant. Nothing has changed.
I just note that there are a couple of screening items indicated, but.
I'm not sure.
So, my last question is simply.
And I'm actually in the process of purchasing the house next door in, in order to disrupt any kind of effect to the, you've mentioned about the, it's a multi-use zone, residential and commercial?
No, actually, what it is, is the entire block is zoned industrial.
Okay.
So it just so happens that the existing residences in that area are called legally non-conforming.
Yes.
Meaning they're allowed to stay and they can be bought and sold and maintained.
Okay.
But they're technically not listed in our current ordinance as a permitted use within the district. So when it comes to special use and the issue of compatibility, that's where the screening comes in. The applicant has received site plan approval for the building. So what we could do is confirm with a full review of their, administratively of their site plan, that the screening they propose is sufficient. I would, I would venture that since it was approved under, as a medical marijuana use, the screening will be sufficient for adult use. Because in the end, the only thing we were really concerned with was the quantity of plants. But since it's gonna be the same quantity as before, they're just gonna, their designation will shift from just medical to adult use, then the screening should be sufficient. But we would then recommend that your approval be contingent upon the determination that the screening is sufficient.
Okay.
I guess the last, the last point was point four, which says, "We're unaware of additional details pertaining to disposal. Recommend the applicant provide an updated narrative addressing the disposal requirement." Again, that must be something that's in process or?
The, the rules.
Maybe a conditional. Having to do with disposal?
Yes. I think, I think it was disclosed in the, in the package I sent to you guys about the disposal.
Yeah.
Mr. Kingsworthy, I believe that there's been an updated staff report that was sent out to you most recently that would have addressed some of the deficiencies that were contained in the, in the original report. And I think the only two that the, the staff identified as outstanding are the two that were noted in the presentation this evening.
Sorry. I put my packet, packet on top of the other documents.
I honestly wouldn't have changed anything. I would have just stayed medical. But, you know, life is constantly evolving. And so is cannabis in Michigan. And I was forced to head in this direction. I really didn't want to do it. I like the whole medical sector. If I can't make any sales, I won't survive. It's, it's not really my choice, you know? I'll be honest. It really, it really helped me. I mean, I'm about done. Lot of work. I'm an owner-operator, so it's gonna, it's different, I guess.
I just have a question, just curious. I've, I've actually ridden my bike around there. And, you know, I saw the odor control. You do a very good job with the, the odor control. How do you actually like, what goes into that? I'm just curious.
Well, it's a carbon, carbon filter system. It's all dialed in with a, with a Troll Master program. It's, uh, it's quite the, quite the mission, yeah. That's why, that's why it took so long to finish. Because I just, I took it into my own hands. I mean, I'm, I'm a guest in Mount Pleasant. The last thing I want to do is, is come in here and intrude and cause any problems with the local neighbors or whatnot. I did my best to make the building look beautiful as possible.
I didn't smell the thing over there.
You're welcome to visit when I'm operating. We'll do a tour.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, brother.
Any further questions? Thank you.
Okay.
Any more public comments?
We don't have any comments on Zoom. And let me check our email. I don't see any comments on email pertaining to this case, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We'll close public comment and open discussion.
All right, I'll move to approve SUP 2212, subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant shall supply a response on how this business facility is compatible with surrounding land uses. Two, the applicant shall supply acceptable details regarding the site's completed or proposed screening. And three, the applicant shall comply with the requirements, requirements of public works and public safety.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes? Okay, next on the agenda is for public hearing for SUP 2213 at 309 West Michigan.
And ma'am, I was a bit remiss. I should have introduced Andrew Littman and Mario Ortega as the staff from McKenna who are with us tonight.
Thank you.
So I think Mario has the next case. Is that correct? Yes, that's correct. Yeah, sorry, I didn't introduce myself before. Good evening to all of you. As mentioned, this is a, a special land use review for a proposed adult-use marijuana retailer located at 309 West Michigan Avenue. The site is a 2,030-square-foot building that occupies the entirety of the lot. And it has previously been approved and has operated in the past as a medical marijuana provisioning center. The applicant is proposing to cease operations. They say they have not renewed their license for medical marijuana provisioning. And they are applying for strictly to be only an adult-use marijuana retailer. The site located in, in the north part of downtown is surrounded predominantly by commercial uses on the north, south, northeast, and west. And to the south is a, a single-family residence. However, in this case as well, the, the future land use for this area, this entire block is commercial or mixed use. Actually, I should say mixed-use medium. And then it's the zoning for the entirety of the area on this block. So east, west, and south is CD4 or general urban designation with a higher intensity, CD5 to the north. So it's envisioned to be a mixed-use downtown and continued to be planned that way. And these are some current photos of the site. As, as you can see, it had operated previously as Consano. This is looking to the north, adjacent property. Looking further east down Michigan Street and looking west down Michigan Street. So similarly, in this case, we look at first the general requirements for special use approval, and they deal with compatibility. You have our review letter that goes into a little bit more detail. But in summary, the applicant is consistent and compatible with the, all the requirements, the seven different requirements of special use approval. Because the use is listed in our zoning ordinance in this section. And as mentioned, the majority of the uses are, in the area, are single, commercial uses. There are, they, and plus, as a marijuana retailer, they're basically have similar characteristics for other commercial uses. Their hours of operation are gonna be regulated or are controlled by the ordinance. So they would not be open an excessive amount of time. But it's similar to the other businesses in the area. And then while they are, while adult-use marijuana retailers can sometimes generate excessive traffic, because this is in our downtown area and designated as such, it's envisioned to have that level of intensity. So based on our findings, we do believe that it meets all the requirements for your general special use criteria for compatibility. And then looking at the specific adult-use marijuana requirements, the first being that the establishment will comply with the appropriate state statutes. So we would just recommend that any approval be contingent upon the applicant obtaining their license from the state. As a, the other requirement refers to co-location. However, it's not applicable in this location. But then reviewing their application, they have met all the setback in screening standards with regards to minimizing any adjacent impact. Because, once again, it's surrounded by commercial. They have provided submission documentation either in, just to back up a second, similarly to your other, other case, they did submit some additional information. We prepared a review letter and they submitted supplemental information. So we, you do have a revised review letter. So this information is also based on the revised supplemental information. But they have, and that has led us to make the determination that they are compliant with storage and disposal. They indicated they will not have any storage outside the building. Just specifically with term of signage, they didn't indicate any specific signage. However, they would need to get an approval, a permit, separate permit for the signage anyway. So if they wanted to make any changes, they'll just have to make an application for signage at that time for the, any signage. In regards to odor control, this is a key one. Even though this is a retailer and they don't always have a lot of odor issues, open marijuana can occur from time to time. So, and however, as mentioned, they've already operated as a medical marijuana. So they have a system in place. So we would just recommend that, that any approval should be contingent upon the mechanical inspector, mechanical inspector's approval of the system to ensure that the previous system will continue to operate effectively. Then they've met all their other specific requirements with regards to setbacks. And we have our specific retailer requirements. So the hours of operation will be in compliance with our ordinance and with all the other specific retail operation requirements. So in the end, we do recommend approval of the proposed adult-use marijuana retailer subject to the applicant, contingent upon the applicant obtaining an adult-use marijuana retailer license from the state, maintaining continued compliance, and then approval by the city's mechanical inspector of the, the air handling system. With that, I can take any questions at the appropriate time.
Any questions? Okay, we'll close questions and open public comment and invite the applicant to come forward.
The applicant is on Zoom right now with his hands raised. And I will invite him. Whoops, hang on.
Hello?
Hi, Caleb. This is Caleb Carey.
Hello, how are you? Yes, does anyone have any questions? I would like to thank the board for hearing. We've been operational for three years as a medical. In fact, we were the first licensed medical in the city of Mount Pleasant, and it's a relief and it's great to be able to continue some kind of future. Thank you.
Were there any questions of Mr. Carey while he's while he's available on on Zoom here?
Mr. Carey, why are you making the switch from medical to recreational?
Well, we would be fine continuing medical, but it's just not financially feasible. As a previous applicant described, the cannabis industry is changing. In a recreational and medical paradigm, there is really no survival as a medical. We lost a fair amount of money the last year and a half trying to operate medical. We're a small mom and pop shop. A lot of marijuana businesses are vertically integrated. They're very well-funded, and they can afford to to lose to a certain extent because they have other recreational shops to help prop up their business. So it's it's strictly a financial one. Unfortunately, there's it you cannot have a medical business without a recreational.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for the applicant? Thank you. Any public comment?
There's no one else on Zoom, Madam Chair, and I don't see any comments via our email.
I'm seeing no public wants to comment. I will close public comment and open discussion.
I'll move to approve SUP 2213, subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant obtains an adult-use marijuana retailer license from the state and maintain continued compliance with all applicable state statutes and rules at all times. Two, approval by the city's mechanical inspector of an air handling system in compliance with Section 154, 410B, 4B7.
I'll second.
Move to approve?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Next on the agenda is SUP 2214 at 2157 South Mission Street.
So this will be pretty familiar at this point. But this is a special land use review for a proposed adult-use marijuana retailer. As mentioned, the the location is on South 2157 South Mission Street, and it is an existing medical marijuana provisioning center. They received theirs approvals, and they have have all the approvals for the medical marijuana. And they and in this particular case, they are going to be co-locating with the adult use. So they're going to maintain their medical marijuana provisioning center license and also have adult use for sale in the in the facility. And this is something that is both allowed by the local by the city's ordinance and by state statute. The applicant will just need to, per state requirements, specifically have every type of marijuana either designated as medical or adult use within the facility. And so this is in a multi-tenant building that's and the site is about 0.589 acres. Other retailers in this location include a cellular phone store and a restaurant. So this aerial photo, and this is just provided for context, so that in the north is the Isabella Bank. So east you have the large shopping center. South is a restaurant, and west across the street, Mission Street, is another shopping center. And this corridor obviously is a high use, high-density corridor, commercial corridor of the city with a medium use, mixed-use high and CD5 zoning designation. So it is existing, it is used, and it's planned for high-intensity commercial and other mixed-use operations. So as mentioned, this is the multi-tenant building. They're doing business as pure options currently. And as to the north, you're looking at the bank. South, you're seeing the restaurant. West, the other side of the street. For your context. So similarly, you would first look at general special use requirements. This is a high-density and highly-traveled commercial corridor, and it has the capacity and capabilities of dealing with the volume of traffic created by the site. And it's also, once again, its retail operations are going to be similar to other retail and commercial operations in the corridor. So therefore, it's very compatible with the other uses. The one thing we note, however, is that special use requirements also have to make sure that there is not any adverse impact on the surrounding neighborhood or surrounding uses. This particular site on their own particular property is a finite number of parking spaces. Their own traffic study has indicated that at a peak time, they could have as many as 23 vehicle trips by customers in an hour, 23 onsite, then of course, 23 offsite. And that's not accommodating for for any type of parking spaces designated as a curbside pickup, which limits their their use, and it doesn't compensate for the the number of employees that would be in the site. So however, being in this location, there is an extensive parking lot to the east. So we've had conversations with the applicant. We've indicated that we believe that they can provide us with a traffic mitigation plan for this particular location because these particular uses have high volumes on Fridays and Saturdays. So their their traffic can get pretty extensive. So we don't want to, we want to ensure, at least in the beginning of the operation, when they typically are most active, you know, when they first open up as adult use, they don't have any negative impact on the other uses on the site. So not impact the restaurant and the other businesses. So if something too were to happen, such as the amount of parking spaces are just too excessive, we'd like to have a mitigation plan from the applicant, too, so they could indicate where, for example, employees could park, where extra customer runoff could be designated, and also that they have that permission to park on the other property in that case. So then looking at the specific adult use requirements, similarly to the other case before you denied, we just would recommend that any approval be contingent upon them obtaining a license and also operating in compliance with the co-location requirements. However, they're based on their location. They've met all the setbacks, their documentation in case of deal with storage appropriately. And with regards to their, as I mentioned, setback also from other uses, air compliance, and then the specific retailer requirements, they are in compliance with the hours of operation and other standards of the ordinance. Similarly to previous case, with regards to odor control, that's the one use we want to, one characteristic of the of the use we want to make sure is always well-regulated. So we would recommend any approval is contingent upon the mechanical inspector approval. So we are recommending approval of this special use, as mentioned, according to obtaining their license from the state, approval by the city's mechanical inspector, and the applicant providing a traffic mitigation plan.
Any questions for our McKenna associates?
I have a question. So for that last point, the traffic mitigation and excessive parking, our current zoning code doesn't require a certain number of parking spots for any business. What kind of methods for traffic mitigation? I can't imagine any myself. I'm just curious what you guys think for that, because that is a very small parking lot.
It is.
And they're right on on Mission, which is a pretty busy street. I'd hate for traffic to back up onto that street. But then there is the runoff into the parking lot behind if they can get permission for that. So are those along the lines of what you're thinking? Or?
Yeah, basically, because as you mentioned, we don't have any specific parking requirements. However, for the function of the site to be compatible and meeting a special use, that's why that comes under the purview of the special use. So for its characteristics, Mission Street, the good thing about that actual driveway and configuration is that they have turn-in lanes and acceleration lanes out. So Mission Street is actually already designed and capable of handle of as best they can handling excessive backups.
Okay.
But the way to best mitigate it is for that if it occurs, because you never know. Maybe they have other operational methods that will deal with the high volume of customers. But if they do have a high volume of customers, some options could be to have the employees park offsite behind, basically to the east of the building. So therefore, they would minimize the demand in on the actual parking on the actual property. Then also something like signage for excessive parking to indicate to customers where else they could park. So that that would be appropriate. And we just wanted to discuss that with the applicant so that way they could obtain authorization from their adjacent property owner, because typically you would require a cross-access parking sharing agreement or easement agreement.
And I imagine that's the same as what Texas Roadhouse has, since their parking is always full, and they're always filling into the adjacent lot, too.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So definitely in that area, it's not, we're not for lack of parking generally, but we want to make sure that authorization is granted, should it be needed.
Yeah. Because you mentioned, too, that their two busiest nights would be Friday and Saturday night. I also imagine the Chinese restaurant in that same would also be Friday and Saturday night would be their big. So I can envision there being a lot of parking being full in there during those two nights. Okay, thank you.
I'd like to kind of piggyback on that question. I'm not super familiar with this spot, but it doesn't seem it doesn't seem easy for pedestrians to access from the extra lot to the to this to this lot. It's not the same as Texas Roadhouse, I think, because it's an open access. This, in this case, people would have to walk around. So I don't know what kind of options we might have for sidewalks, but keeping in mind pedestrian safety, would that go back to the public, the public safety, a public safety review of some kind? I'm curious, possibly.
I would think that might be the most appropriate means. When it comes to pedestrian access, we had our opportunity at the site plan approval when the site was originally constructed. If, in terms of compatibility, you know, this is special use, so if you wanted to address that with the applicant, you could. The only issue we will face is the fact that they're a tenant in the building, and so they would have to determine to discuss it with the property owner as how to do it. But in terms of the type of improvements, I mean, it is something that we're always striving for with all our new approvals and uses. So something as simple as having sidewalk spurs from the sidewalk along Mission into the site can help, and because that will at least direct direct pedestrian traffic. And then seeing where other means of cross-access could help, maybe designating where the nearest bus stops are and that sort of thing, doing an analysis of the pedestrian paths from those locations to here, because the residences are there to the east, so I'm not sure how often they would walk through the site, but it's definitely a possibility, and we want to encourage it as well. I think it'd be a matter of speaking with the applicant about the probability of pedestrian enhancements.
Any further questions?
Madam Chair, I will note that the site is served by sidewalk along Mission Street, and there is access off of that sidewalk into the shopping center site. So for that part, you know, I'm not sure that this site would be what one would call comfortably walkable from all directions, but I think it would be consistent in terms of its accessibility from a pedestrian standpoint with other businesses along that stretch of the corridor. So it wouldn't be out of character in terms of its ability to handle pedestrians in a similar manner.
One more question. How many parking spaces are in the that lot right now?
I believe it's around, I want to say around 30-ish. I can look at the site plan to get that precise number.
Thank you.
Okay. So no further questions. We'll open public comment and invite the applicant to come forward.
Hello, I'm Ryan Jox. I'm a representative of the applicant. Wanted to start by addressing a few points on the traffic mitigation plan. We actually have somewhat of a traffic mitigation plan already in place. We attempt to move customers through the shops quickly. We do that by having a well-formed process in place to allow for pre-ordering and curbside pickup. So a really important point to emphasize is that, you know, the average customer time onsite is four to five minutes. So you might have 20 to 23 vehicles in an hour, but they're only there for just a matter of minutes. A lot of our customers preorder. They they pull up, they pay, they they receive the product within a matter of minutes, and a lot of them have already pre-ordered. So they come in, they check their IDs, they check out, and they're out. And there's there's an entrance and an exit, so they're not even crossing paths. You're in and you're out really fast. So we intentionally do that to make sure that they're not there a long time and the parking lot doesn't get too full. And we speak to the landlord pretty regularly and in conversations with LaBelle. The employees at all the businesses in the center typically park in the lot behind, and the owners of that lot have never had a problem. So often, if it's a busy time, our employees will park in that excess lot, and it's actually, it's safe for them because there's a back entrance to the building, so they don't have to walk around. They can just go directly from their car to the rear entrance. So that would be a large part of our mitigation plan is employee parking in the overflow lot and continuing to emphasize pre-ordering and curbside pickup, so customers aren't lingering in the lot like they would at the restaurant or maybe the barber shop. Any questions?
How is the local businesses that are there, the barber shop and the restaurant and the cell phone company again, how will they be impacted again by having 25 cars in and out of there? When you're in a restaurant, you may be in there for a half hour, 45 minutes to kind of have a meal, and if I go in there and I can't find a parking spot, I'm going to leave. So have you talked to any of the businesses that are there and how their businesses might be impacted by your request again to have that many cars coming in there?
We seem to have a good relationship right now, but I just don't anticipate there, because it's 20 to 25 cars in an hour, but they're only there for five minutes. So we really don't see more than six, four to six cars at one time. I think that's the highest amount that we'll see during peak hours. We have other, we have other stores that are of similar size with similar volume with seven or eight parking spots, and we don't typically have problems. It's just, there's a lot of traffic in an hour, but they're in and out so fast that there's really not a lot of spot occupancy. That's the right word.
How many spots are directly in front of your store?
I'd have to look at the site plan, but it is.
Looks like 12.
12. There's some in the center and then some in the front. So the ones right in front are designated for a curbside, so that we try to keep them away from the other businesses.
So if you have 25 an hour, and you can turn them over every five minutes, that's 24 would just be two parking spaces that would be used.
Yeah, and I just want to give conservative estimates, you know. There could be times where there's four to six, but with employees parking in the other lot, I think that we haven't seen that lot full since we've been there, really.
Okay.
I definitely understand the con- I definitely understand the concerns and we're going to keep doing everything we can to keep customers only there for five minutes.
Does your landlord designate a certain number of spots that are just yours?
Nope, it's an open plan, so it's all shared.
Any more questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the public?
There's no one on Zoom or in, in our email. I will note as a follow-up, it appears as though there's about 30 sites, 30 parking spots, as Mario said, according to the site plan for that shopping center. About four of those, I believe, are handicap sites. One other thing I will note, Madam Chair, in the, both this case and the one previous in terms of the recommendation, this, the county does not, or I'm sorry, the city does not have a mechanical inspector. We use the county. So just to note, still, the mechanical inspector in general would be a recommendation in terms of a, an additional mitigating factor that, that would need to be complied with. It's just not, this says the city inspector, so it should say the county inspector or the mechanical inspector, if you will. So just wanted to make that note so it was clear.
Thank you. Okay. So no public comment or closed public comment and open discussion?
Well, in the perfect storm, we might have issues with that little parking lot. But I, I think with the rate, the expected rate and, and the idea that people might just as likely go, you know, drive away rather than try to create unsafe conditions either there or behind the facility or whatever. I, my questions were just, I don't know. I just can't imagine people walking from, from the parking lot. So I'm fine with, with what the way it is.
I mean, you know, if you really want that Chinese food, you'll, you'll take that, that little walk over there, you know?
I, I will take the bus for the, for that.
And it sounds like a good Friday night over there. If we have five minutes there, go to the Chinese bar over there. Burlington Steakhouse.
Have to get a shuttle service going there.
All right, I'll move to approve SUP 2214, subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant obtains an adult-use marijuana retailer license from the state and maintains continued compliance with all applicable state statutes and rules at all times. Two, approval by the county's medical inspector of an air handling system and compliance with Section 154, 410B, 4B7. And three, the applicant provide a traffic mitigation plan that outlines methods for accommodating excessive traffic and parking.
I'll second.
Move to approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion pass? And that brings the, for the next on the agenda is a staff report?
Public comments?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, public, yes. Sorry. So open public, public comment?
Yes, there's no, no hands raised on Zoom. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
No hands raised on Zoom. I don't see any comments, public comments in our email. And I don't see anybody in the audience, but if there were, they would have five minutes to speak. And they would need to indicate their name and address.
Okay, we'll close public comment. And next on the agenda is staff report?
The only item I have to report to you is that there was one administrative site plan review that was approved. That was for 2214. The site plan review is 2214 for 1640 Gover Parkway. And that is Resco. They're looking at putting a, an addition to their existing building in Industrial Park South on the north, north end of Gover Parkway around the, the turnaround at the top of the street.
Thank you. And next on the agenda is for adjourning to a work session?
Move to adjourn to work session.
Second, second, third, fourth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Anybody need a brief break or do you want to jump right into this?
Let's get to it.
All right, I will, if it's all right, I will start the, the discussion and we'll go from there. Back at the beginning of the year, I believe that Jacob had worked with you, our previous planner, had worked with you to establish a schedule, a listing of potential work session topics. And you've worked through a number of those over the course of this year up to this point in time. With the departure of Jacob and essentially a full-time staff planner with the city, the question from the staff to the planning commission members is, given the topics that you have remaining on your list, and there's a, a list in your packet of what those are, would it make sense to delay additional work sessions on those topics during the interim period while we are, we are looking for a replacement for our staff planner? Again, understanding that, you know, our consultant resources are limited because we're one of a number of clients. So it just becomes difficult to keep that same schedule and that same intensity without the full-time attention of our staff planner. We could do it if you need to, but it just seems to me that if we are looking at hiring a, a new staff person with the city, making some changes now kind of hamstrings them when they come in because they don't have the opportunity to provide their input that they would have to live with the decisions or the discussion. And doesn't allow them to put the same stamp of their recommendations along with you all in those discussions. So that's question one. Would you agree to postpone action on the remaining work session topics? And again, in my mind, if we can revisit this topic in a couple of months, depend, we'll, we'll have a better idea whether or not our search for a replacement is going along and, you know, we have somebody waiting to, or ready to, to step in. Or if it's looking like it's going, we're going to be in it for the long haul without a staff person, and we can revisit that decision and identify topics that are important to you and, and, you know, for the city to, to continue. So that's one thought, you know, postponing action for at least a period of time on the list that, that you guys came up with earlier in the year. And then the second question that I would have is, if you decide to do that or in your deliberations for that, are there any items on that list that you feel are, are very timely and are a high priority that should be addressed sooner rather than later? And if that's the case, we should identify what those are. And then we can plan accordingly to have a work session on those, you know, in the next couple of months. So those are really the two topics that I thought would be instructive for us as staff as we move forward during this interim period.
Personally, I'd rather hold off on all of this until there's a full-time planner. I think it puts a lot on McKenna to get them up to speed on all of this stuff when they have other commitments rather than having a full-time staff person. And I don't think any of us here feel qualified enough to move forward with all of these topics, too, on our own. So that's my two cents. I'm, the only thing that I'm concerned about is the last time we tried to hire a planner. It took over a year and I don't want to like put things on hold for a year. Do you have any updates on where you are with the search process?
Well, we are, we are highly sensitive to the last time. And hope that we don't have the same repeat of, you know, that period of time being taken to find a staff person. We have advertised for the position. I think I updated you last meeting with that. We have interviewed a couple of candidates and we are in the process of evaluating the results of those interviews in terms of next steps. So, you know, whether or not we can move forward with that, we should, we should know in the next week or two. And then based on the outcome of that, by the next meeting, I should have at least more certain information for you on that topic.
And I'm begging to say, well, I definitely understand the ability to just hold off so we make sure your new planner is going to have fully aware and input on the projects. If it starts to get extended, we have the staffing capability of, of addressing these and helping you out with those as well. So that way you don't have to have an extended amount of time. But should that happen, and if there's a particular topic that you feel you'd really like to address that you don't want to let, let go for too long. So if you ever feel the need that things need to get moving again, we'd be, we'd be more than ready to assist with it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll also add that one of the challenges we had, and we discussed this a little bit, I think, the last meeting or two, is that with the cases that you heard this evening, McKenna actually came in kind of in the middle of that process. And so a lot of the, the work before Jacob left on the July, no, I'm sorry, the July, August. Yeah, the June cases were pre-prepped and they were more or less ready to go. We had to kind of fill in some blanks and update some things. This was the first meeting where we had some cases that were partially approved or we had to, because of the, they were marijuana cases and we had to begin with new license standards for the city. And then that stopped and then it restarted. And so there was some uncertainty there and some scrambling at the last minute. And in the meantime, the McKenna staff were trying to figure out what was approved, what wasn't approved, where, where are we in the process, et cetera? So I'm hopeful that moving forward, not only do we all have a better understanding of our process, but we also should have most of the cases coming forward, new cases to our, our consulting staff so that they'll be involved beginning to end as opposed to trying to interpret what had been done, what needs to be done, et cetera. So I think that you'll find that the next month or two should run a little bit smoother as we have more full control of the cases that are before you and being considered, so.
I, I'm just gonna say, I, I feel comfortable with holding off.
Yeah, I don't mind punting it as long as it's, you know, not a year. But, you know, I'm not going to try to read your poker face, but hopefully these applicants are pretty good and no offense to the McKenna people, but, you know, we might have a planner.
If we do have a planner by next month, then this is pretty much moot.
Right.
So if we don't have a planner next month, then.
We'll have to readdress.
Yeah. As I recall from the earlier, I think it was early 2022 discussion on setting up work session topics, there was a lot, I mean, all those things, nothing really screamed, at least where I recall to be mandatory, we have to discuss this as a hot button issue. And sometimes we've had work sessions where there's, you know, one person complaining, city commission, then it's like, they, city commission directs, planning commission go out like, hey, let's investigate this more. So signs, I say that because sometimes it's, things get into work session topics that aren't, from my view, essential to be in them in the first place. One thing, if we went from hypothetically, if there was no planner hired for the next, say, six months or some other time, that's where if it was a longer time period, you know, one work session I think could be useful to see is, you know, McKenna as consultants, this is an opportunity to have kind of private sector consulting firm insight into what are hot topics in planning in the state of Michigan today. And then that can be useful for planning commissioners sitting in Mount Pleasant, Michigan to hear about what's going on in other college towns, cities that are peers for, for benchmarking things. And then there might be ideas that down the road, one, three, five years later, might refer to in different, you know, master plan updates, different, different situations. And so signs, I think it helps us see that, that broader picture additionally getting Michigan planner and, you know, at map conferences. So, you know, that would hypothetically be nice, but it's also, it's not something that needs to be just done next month. And that'd be something, similarly be nice to do with like a, you know, incoming planner once they get their, get their feet wet. Yeah.
Yeah, excellent idea, absolutely.
All right, just, I kind of have a question on the topic that was on the list for October, the e-commerce fulfillment centers. And I'm not sure if it was that we were looking because we had interest in our community for a business coming in for that nature or if that was that for to better understand for attracting that type of business to come in?
Was that in relation to the Amazon building that's on the east end of town? The fulfillment center, the, the small one that's over there? I can't have a good discussion now.
I think, is that in Union Township?
Is it? Or is it on our side?
Either way, I think that's all these are like hypothetical.
I believe that one's in Union Township, yes.
It's by Home Depot.
Yeah. And so I think those are hypothetical things would be, you know, if we had time, it'd be nice to put them in there, but it's also, it's, it's not necessarily essential. Whether it's interim, they're probably having a work session on that.
Yeah, to the best of my knowledge, we haven't had anyone asking us, is there a place that we can do this in, in the city and where could that be? Which would, to me, kind of raise this to a little higher level of urgency, if you will, or priority. If, if there was a demand and we needed to answer that and it wasn't adequately addressed in what we allow or don't allow. At this point, I haven't, to my knowledge, we haven't received inquiries to that extent.
Why would a fulfillment center be different from, say, any other retail business or warehouse business?
Oh, actually, when it comes to the fulfillment centers, they do have some other characteristics that are more intensive than a typical warehouse. So if you didn't compensate, for example, the number of loading bays, the number of vehicles stored on-site, sometimes even get into issues if they're trying to be more advanced and say have, have electric vehicles and electric vehicles on-site, while definitely good for the environment, you just have to make sure that they position, for example, the storage accordingly for those, those. Because I've seen some that like the, they have massive amount of batteries.
I mean, UPS has a big warehouse here in town. Maybe that's in the industrial zone. I mean, we already have that type of facilities here. We're not going to have to write a whole new set of codes, are we?
I wouldn't think so. I would just think it'd be more about being very specific in the ordinance of just maybe listing that type of use and then indicating any kind of additional characteristics that would impact it. Another issue would be, I mean, you already have your lighting standards, but it would be about taking a look at your lighting standards, for example, and making sure that they address any issues from the fulfillment center. So chances are they should, but, you know, a lot of times they'll try and get a variance for like extremely high light sources and then hours of operation, too. And it could be just about listing them and then in just indicating that you'd like, say, special use approval for them. So that way you could just go over the details to make sure they're compatible with the location. I do, wouldn't envision them being very extensive, because you are correct, they're pretty similar. But based on some of the size of the facilities that the industry is seeing, it could be, you know, very large impact if, depending on its location and its size.
Yeah, and having said what I said earlier about not having the demand or, or the inquiries, we did have an inquiry probably about a year and a half ago for a last mile facility. And it was, it was not clear to us in terms of exactly what that meant or what activities were going to happen there. But one of the things that I think to Mario's point that was clear was that they would have a significant amount of truck traffic in and out of that during the day, which would more than likely be atypical of other types of warehousing facilities. So that would be one consideration that we would want to make sure that we address.
Because we used to have two, for lack of a better term, beer distributorships here that were very busy and, you know, they went away. But, I mean, we are, the codes we currently have allowed those in the past. Is there anything that we're going to have to seriously change?
We'd have to, we'd have to take a look at that. That, that sounds like a great work session topic for discussion. I don't, I don't know the answer to that right off the top of my head, but it would certainly be something that we'd want to make sure that we addressed in some way so it wasn't silent, right?
Okay. And another thing about that, in terms of traffic, i- if someone's looking at a location along a state-owned road, we really don't have any say in that, do we?
You, you would have a say in terms of if that's the most appropriate location and making sure they only be located, for example, along a state trunk line. That could be a requirement of it. So not just being in an industrial district, but being in an industrial district with direct access onto a state trunk line capable of handling the traffic flow. Because they could find some other site and then, for example, go through one of the smaller access roads and that would negatively impact adjacent ones.
But in terms of if somebody wanted to have three driveways onto M20, we can't stop that.
No, no. The number of driveways and their configuration will be dictated by MDOT or by the county. But, but the idea of having them with direct access onto those trunk lines would probably be more imperative than just having proximity to or just saying, oh, it's down the street that we'll get down to.
That might be something to look at then. I mean, I can't, I envision someone wanting to put a, a high-traffic-flow warehouse on a side street, but.
Yeah, you never know.
Yeah.
And as Bill said, it would be a matter of, it would be going through the exercise, looking at your ordinance as making sure that any issues you might see come up with this particular use have already been dealt with, with your current ordinance and where, where maybe you just want to go with like, like we call sometimes a both a belt and suspender situation where you specify it specifically kind of thing.
So what I'm hearing is there seems to be consensus that if we take a pause from your existing schedule of work sessions, that you would be okay with that. You don't want to do it indefinitely and we certainly don't want to hamstring you in that regard so that if there are some things that come up that need to be addressed that we can schedule those, that would be fine. And if, again, if we are out there a number of months before we can reasonably expect to fill our in-house staff position, we may want to revisit that decision and identify what topics you would be interested in covering with a work session or two along the way. And I heard one from Commissioner Leach there that, that sounded like that would be a very worthwhile one. If it didn't, you know, certainly involve a change to the ordinance or something specific to your ordinance that you felt needed to be corrected or amended in some way. Is that reasonable?
I would think so.
Did I summarize what I thought I heard accurately?
Now, do we call this to a vote in a work session?
No, you don't.
No motion required?
Just to leave, I think. Don't say just to adjourn, right?
Yeah, if, if you're good with that, we'll leave it like that by consensus and, you know, we'll, we'll revisit this topic with you in, in the next couple of months, depending upon where we're at and, you know, you'll have some updates along the way as well.
Play it by ear.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. We've moved to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, adjourn.
At eight.
Thank you all and thanks so much for, for your attendance this week. I love you. Very. You're gonna spoil it, which is good.